All right, I've seen that it's six P M. I'm in full order the June sixteenth twenty twenty five village toward the first use to build. Allegiance by Gary didn't.
We'll call for you.
Oh, sure. President service.
Here.
Rusty Bane and.
Here.
Bongard.
Here.
Michael Kraut.
Here.
Tasmar.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Siegler.
Here.
No form.
Right confirmation. What's the meeting posted?
Meeting was posted as required by law.
Public participation, I think we all know the drill, so I'm not going to read this.
Honey.
Connie.
Honey first.
Welcome back.
Thank you. I'm very glad to be back. I'm here again to ask you to sell the library to the Legion. As I have said many times, these are our veterans. We owe them a safe place to run their programs. Oh, sorry. I showed you many things that they do for our communities and our school students. They have sacrificed for us and we should do so for them. That building has sat all these years just wasting money and we're, I think we could take a loss at that because of all of that and they're willing to pay. I think the village could donate money to help them pay their lots is the two lots. I think that you guys could make some kind of deal with them. It's time that we help them out. And I, like I said before, I don't want to see them to go to New Blairs. They're more than welcome over there. And it would be pretty pathetic if our veterans leave here and go to New Blairs. I don't think we should be allowing that. I don't, I think you were asked by a lady before, how many of you are veterans? And I think none of you raised your hand. So you don't understand what they sacrificed for us, what they went through for us. And these guys are getting older and we're getting older. It's hard to get down the steps to do their bingo and that helps them do their things up into school for the kids. And they said that if they had a decent place, they would do much more. I was here at a board meeting and I asked years ago and they said, well, we're not going to sell it to them because they don't have any, as you call it, foot, foot traffic. They won't make us any money. Well, you're not making any money with that thing sitting there empty for all these years. And I think that they, they want to be part of the community and they want to do more for the community. So I'm asking you again to please consider selling that Legion or that library to the Legion. Work something out with them. You've got two lots over there. You could do something. You could do parking. You could do a building on something for the village or whatever. So please consider it. And I'm going to keep bringing it up until I find out that it's sold. Thank you.
Thank you.
And so then it's an opportunity to speak at the appropriate moment rather than now.
Um, if, I mean, if you want, if they offer time to speak during the item agenda, you're allowed to speak then. If you want to just take a moment for public comment now, it's up to you.
Oh, I'll give you time during the agenda now. Just, we don't, we don't have a very large crowd today, so.
Yes, I saw you seem to like to speak on agenda items. A couple of things. I noticed in the bills that we bought a, or paid for a truck and a pile that I have seen sit in the Public Works Building for over a month. Part way in the back. I want to know why, because we had massive discussions about how we needed a truck because the old one fifteen was undrivable. And now we got a truck and it sits in the building. I'm kind of curious why that's happening.
Remember, this is not a question and answer session. Staff will make their comments during their staff comments.
Second thing is, it's Friday afternoon. I walked outside my buildings. And oh my God, I was blown over. Um, downtown smell like a minar pit. And I talked to Ian about this because it has to do with our dam and the sludge that collects in the corner and ferments and rots during the day and it doesn't move. And we've got a brand new business that liked to open up and hopefully they'll get their brewer's license soon. And I can't imagine people coming to town and sitting out back in a minar pit. Now, other years, Public Works had a way to get rid of that sludge. And I'm sure Tom O'Connor knows. I don't, but I know you could walk down Main Street and it was fine. Now it smells like a minar pit. And then it just adds to the ghetto of this community. Number two is the supposed myth that we have a butterfly sanctuary in front of the dam. I have yet to see a butterfly in the five years that guy who works for parks in Madison was planting some sort of prairie flower. It's been hot, it's been biting, we watered it, and now we've got nothing but weeds and high grass. And I have to commend Brian Kubli and Steve Brennan. They did an amazing job cleaning the banks of the Sugar River this afternoon and this morning. It looks ten times better than what it did. Now they need to move across the river and do it would be nice if that was also cleaned up because we have a beautiful dam. It's historic. It's been here for a very long, long time. We put a lot of money into it when we had the two thousand and eighteen five hundred year flood. And we need to take care of those kinds of things because the taxpayer paid something like five hundred thousand.
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred thousand on the name. So, and one last thing I thought was interesting, Wall Street Journal this weekend has the Rust Belt story in it. And Wisconsin happens to be in the Rust Belt that they cover. Uh, the places and things you can do in Wisconsin. They showed Dubuque as their front stage piece. But um, I thought it was very fascinating. So if anybody would like to look at it, I'll meet with somebody over here. And um, it's worth the read. That's all I have.
That's all I have.
And on the consent agenda, we have many items on the consent agenda tonight. Eighteen minutes, check register, Black Party. Thank you all. You can see that liquor licenses. Your team in motion.
I'll move you through.
Are you telling me? All those in favor?
Alright.
I opposed.
I've got a question. So number C, under the consent agenda, it was noted that Chief Hughes suggested that they move it toward the other street. So is that going to be done then?
I think we sent the recommendation to the Black Party people and it's up to their discretion and what they want to do with Public Works.
Do you see it? Some recommendation to Black Party group. Their decision to decide what.
So I mean, it's, we're talking about half a lot there. I mean, so when will we find out about this? Did I, I don't have an answer to that because like, what? From the clerk's office standpoint, we just assumed that would be decided between the Black Party, you know, if they wanted to move it or not. I think, like, there was a recommendation, yes.
So that passed. Have nothing for the president's report today, staff reports.
So briefly, I'll, I'll address the truck. There were organizational issues and the desire to get our Public Works house in order concerning care for our vehicles so that it has some longevity that we've wanted to get in place, which we have done now before getting our, our new stuff out. But that will be done shortly. Also, there's a process for getting the title there. It's, it's funny. You, you mentioned free things, Judy. And we actually addressed them all today.
Oh.
We, we do not, we do not for sure have a solution for the sludge at the dam. We have an idea that we're going to try to execute on um, to take care of that problem, to essentially make it flow along the river as opposed to cooling where it is. We do not know if it will work or not. We do not have a tried and true solution yet. Uh, but we have an idea that we're going to attempt. And third, that one plot of Brown mentioned a community art is next on my list.
I did talk to Jerry Fucks because this happens every year. And he was saying that you can go down there and you move a portion of it to uh, one of the doors and channel water will take it down river, but you can't get it all done. You have to work at it every day.
We're, we're trying to come up with something we can even place that would essentially direct it into the streams that it doesn't collect.
I'm moving. Any others?
Uh, yeah, so from the clerk's office, um, I know I sent an email to the trustees, but just so the public is aware. Um, the recall petition that was out um, did come back last Wednesday. They had until five P M. today. Um, and it came back last Wednesday. Um, the clerk's office is currently on doing their due diligence to certify that. Um, we have thirty one days to do that, so we'll have a certification if it is complete by uh, July twelfth, I think is my due date there. And then depending on circumstances, we will take that through its natural progression. If we do have to certify the recall petition, the board would be required to meet and call an election date for us. And that's all stuck in statute and stuff. So um, I will be continuing to update as it progresses, but so.
Right. Moving on, an old business, special consider stormwater utility easement at Wisconsin Power and Light.
It's me. Uh, it's been before the board report. This is the actual document that would be recorded included with a map. Uh, so it goes along with the condition of use permit that was approved by the planning commission and the, the concept of the easement, which it brought before this body before. So that they could execute their site plan. It's basically just putting this so uh, stormwater pipe uh, from the, the northwest corner of their property all the way out to the river. Um, it's my understanding they've gotten D N R approval and everything, so they just want to get this approved and recorded.
Will we approve the easement for the uh, the stormwater utility easement uh, for Wisconsin Power and, or about the Wisconsin Power and Light property?
I second it.
Motion by Gary, second one by Shelley. All those in favor?
I heard.
Opposed. New business. Special Consider Johnny O's Pizzeria Class B Liquor License.
Okay, most of our liquor licenses this year were straightforward, which is why we put them, we put them on consent agenda. I do have three here. They're a little uh, odd. And based on their recommendations from um, licensed advisory, um, I'm bringing them to you here this way. So this first one is, um, you'll notice Johnny has a class B beer and a class C wine. Um, we don't currently have a class B liquor reserve license. Those are based on population numbers. Now, the D O A population numbers come out in August and we are almost certainly guaranteed at this point because we were only eight people short. We have quite a few new houses in, built since then. We are almost certainly guaranteed to have that next reserve license. So what we're ask, I'm asking you tonight, would we approve Johnny's class B liquor license contingent on the D O A numbers um, coming out on in August? Being happy enough. So that's why we're this separate, this one separately.
I'll make a motion to approve Johnny O's class B liquor license contingent on D O A.
Second.
Alright, Tony, second one by Debbie. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed. Yes, Connie.
So see, Johnny O's gets the next liquor license, right?
That's correct.
So then how many more people do we have to have? So never mind, the depot's only going to have beer and wine. Never mind.
Um, for the information on that though, it's every five hundred people get you a new reserve license.
Okay.
Um, and I have had discussions with several other people that would be interested in the next liquor license. So as we grow, we'll, I will keep tabs on that.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda is discuss, consider Aaron's hometown market LLC doing businesses Piggly Wiggly, class A beer and class A liquor license.
This one is separate because uh, as many people know, the Piggly Wiggly is changing ownership. And because the uh, and that has happening on the twenty second. So what we need to do actually is approve um, their license for the time period of June twenty second through June thirtieth. And then approve it the second time for the next year period. That, that's the July first through June thirtieth, the July first of this year through June thirtieth next year. Um, so because we need those two time periods approved, we pulled this one separate. There's no issue with um, the Piggly Wiggly and I've been in contact with the new owner and he's a, doing a great job so far, so.
I'll make a motion to approve what you just said, those dates, Mary.
Sounds good.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
I.
Opposed. Second, special consider Family Dollar Class A Beer Class A Liquor License.
This is last one I've got. Uh, the Family Dollar hasn't had a liquor license because they didn't have um, enough consistent staff with operators license. They get a lot of turnover. And last year, the uh, licensed advisory felt that until they could prove that they could show that they were going to have consistent staff with licenses, that they weren't going to provide them a license. So they were denied last year. Um, this year, they were okay with approving license still contingent on them having, I have five operator licenses been turned in. Unfortunately, they haven't actually come in to notarize them and stuff yet. So what we're looking here is an approval of this license continued, contingent on staff having appropriate operators licenses at the clerk's discretion at that point.
I'll make a motion that we uh, approve a class A beer, class A liquor license for Family Dollar contingent upon a, enough staff with the servers or with license.
Yeah, I think I did.
Those in favor?
I.
Proposed. Special Consider Ordinance twenty twenty five oh four regarding a rezoning application for Badger Trail subdivision to be changed from R D rural development to P G public grounds. Our S L single family low density to our S M single family medium density and our S H family, single family to high density district.
As through Plan Commission, uh, or, or recommended by Plan Commission. Um, the zoning, uh, the ones that you just mentioned are consistent with the uh, village comprehensive future land use map. Um, it's uh, right now it's showing as a future planned neighborhood. All the residential zonings would be would be consistent with that. Uh, right now I think there is two hundred and three lots.
Mm hmm.
I think, um, after the, the concessions the developer made in the meeting, uh, Plan Commission meeting on the fly uh, last Wednesday. That's down from two hundred and forty eight lots. Um, as far as zoning goes and actually otherwise, it meets all requirements that we have in ordinance.
Yeah. The developer worked with, with us in the community to adjust their, their plan with, you know, putting the, the buffer zone around it and uh, you know, getting rid of a lot of the high density houses for medium and, and low density.
Jeff, Jeff is here. Jeff is here online in case uh, I, I appreciate you guys. Last Wednesday I said I was going to be in the great state of Wisconsin, just four hours north. Um, but I'm here to answer any questions or go through the whole presentation uh, with the full board if you guys feel that's necessary. Um, and since I started talking, I'll just do a quick recap. We did submit the application a couple of um, well, a couple of months ago to get the ball rolling on rezoning after the annexation was approved. And yes, we had a two hundred and forty eight. We were using all high density lots from the new uh, residential high density zoning district you created. Um, that was met with some resistance from the Plan Commission members and so, and, and the public. We came back last week with a revised plan that showed some fifteen low density, twenty medium density and one hundred and eighty four high density lots, including uh, increased green space, including a twenty foot buffer between all the existing land owners and the new subdivision. Um, after discussion and, and more debate at the meeting, I conceded to uh, change an entire, another block of homes to medium density, which brought our totals down to two hundred and three. Um, I was surprised by how far mu, how much further down it went and so was my client, but we're moving past that. Uh, so now the final proposal, we went from two forty eight down to two oh three. We've got fifty medium density buffering uh, basically everything on the east. We've got fifteen low density buffering the south. And then uh, and then a transition to medium density and then all the high density is basically isolated in the middle. I did drop off new boards that gave on Thursday afternoon and hopefully you guys have all seen those.
Grabbing them now.
Bringing one out right now.
Should have also been in your packet from last, late last week.
Dean, did you have a question?
So when you're talking high density, how big are the lots?
They're the minimum requirement, zoning requirement of uh, six thousand square feet, uh, which is fifty by one twenty. So I think Ian has a tally. Some of the, some of the lots we're calling high density are, are actually in the medium category, just the way the streets layout, but we didn't want to split hairs.
Yeah, so there is, I do a breakdown here. Okay, of the one hundred and eighty four lots that are on there is, is yellow. A hundred and twenty four lots are exactly six thousand square feet. Thirty one lots between six thousand and seven thousand. Twenty lots are between seven and eight thousand. Nine lots are over eight thousand with the largest being four thirteen. So yeah, there, there are quite a few there that would qualify as, as medium density as well.
Gary, did you have something you wanted to say earlier?
I was going to make a motion, but I love the discussion, go first, but.
Anything else on the board?
Connie. How close are those houses together?
They're the. With the, let me ask.
Yeah, I'm going to set back.
I'm working on it. It's not working. It's kind of all the blood sugar is going on the spot. It's being here. Okay.
The, the minimum setback in the, the high density is five foot from the lot line. So each house would be ten feet apart. Um, and then in the medium, high density, I believe it's seven. Um, so it would be fourteen feet apart for those.
So the a man could lay down and touch both houses.
If they're ten feet tall, yeah.
Six feet, I thought you said?
No, that's each side. So it'd be, it would be in high density, the minimum setback would be five foot from the lot line, which means that between two houses, two lots, it would be ten feet. And then the medium and high density is seven feet, so it'd be fourteen feet.
The question, the question was raised at the Plan Commission meeting, uh, to the fire department um, about concerns and, you know, dance. I think fire department would like to see them more separation, but it meets requirements and, and they didn't see a big issue with it, so.
Good, Judy.
Um, if you could quick I read through Ian's whole little report here and all the stuff he put together with it. And I got confused as to where the egress and ingress are based on how he wrote this.
Uh, there's two uh, entrances right now. There's Clive Street, which is basically a jog north on the other side of park from Sugar Ave. And then there's Greenview, God, was it a Boulevard Ave? What is that?
Yeah, I know.
Drive, Greenview Drive. Those are the two uh, ingress right now. There's also Road Stub to the north that would line up perfectly with Vine Street, but for uh, a warehouse in the middle of, of
A bunch of shit.
Owned by somebody else. Uh, so, so yeah, that eventually will be a connection.
But in the meantime, while they're working on this, there's only one egress and ingress. Well, you can't use fine. Because you've got a white check.
Correct. There's Clive Street and he's got the memory of being just Clive Street and uh, Greenview Drive.
Okay. Yeah, the same side.
I'm just giving the feeling that we're standing in the trees doing the old Irish shuttle where you aim high and throw it up there and then make it look like a good guy and come back down. Uh, it could easily pay for itself time and time again if it was down to a hundred and fifty lots. So, you know, it's just still too many people going in on that place and just two streets basically. And most streets are residential streets. I also would like to see, um, Jeff and I talked about this. Uh, a way to get from the green space on the south end to that park without crossing the road. It could be that twenty foot strip just on that last southwest corner down there. You can do the trail all the way around like they got on the west side, but you can't get to that park until you go somehow through somebody's yard. You see that, like, down on the south. So you can go down here and go out. Yeah, well, onto the bike trail and then get back over. The D N R would probably let you have one entrance there. We talked to them about that, but two would be really pushing it. I don't know why they don't like that, but they don't like that. So, but.
Considering my house is right there where you're at, expecting everybody to traffic through and around in the corner, I would certainly ask that you'd have the trail continued on. As they said in the planning meeting uh, that I was at, they were going to put a twenty foot buffer around the entire area. And that clearly is not showing a buffer around the entire area. So I would agree with Dan. It would provide an access point for that neighborhood to go through and it's going to eliminate that little bit of traffic on the Badger Trail that's going to be right behind my house. So I'm being a little bit personal with that, but if it's, if it's around the rest of the area, it should be around that area as well.
So can I ask a question?
We're trying, what is your name?
Adam.
Adam Stannenberg.
We're good. Okay.
Are we mixing two things? Is this, this motion or this? Are we mixing two things? Is this this motion or this item is just to approve the zoning? This would be more preliminary plant discussion, right?
Exactly.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's cool.
That was. I was gonna make the most of all this conversation starting itself, but.
Did it actually get?
Annexed? Yes.
Well, did actually say anything about it?
As I interrupt the tip, you was against it.
They don't get the, I was gonna say.
Thank you.
Is that how it works? It's a unanimous, so so there's one owner of the lot and the lot's contiguous and checks all the boxes for the Department of Administration. There's one owner, it's a unanimous petition to annexate annex, and so there isn't no, there isn't any.
And it's it's unfortunate for the folks that actually live in Exeter and abide by the Exeter requirements and live in Exeter because they want those requirements. And now because that land has been purchased as a whole. It it automatically gets that right, and I don't think that's fair. Again, if I if I wanted to live in the village. And and would next to all of these houses, I would have purchased a house in town. I bought purchased a house out in the country in Exeter to have that seclusion and that privacy. And that's being taken from me because the town is annexing Exeter's land into it.
But the land was for sale. Anybody had the opportunity.
I understand that, but it's still it's still Exeter township, right? That land is Exeter's township.
It was. So was everything south of the border at one point. So everything south of Dade County port uh, border at one point was kind of Exeter. That's how it works.
Yeah, I understand that, but I think the township and the people that live in the township should have a right to say what they're going to do with the land that they're in.
Yep, so let's get back on track to uh, the item at hand, which is the rezoning application.
For Badger Trails, saw move that we approved ordinance twenty twenty-five and.
A second.
See other discussions by the boards for zoning?
I thought. Four.
Zero four.
Oh. Zero four, sorry. Yep.
Okay.
It's okay. Now we have a maker.
So does approve, does approving the zoning mean that the total number of lots has been approved or that all gets discussed as plans?
And there is going to be a meeting for that plot, right?
It was a final plan, but there will be another final plan before it's recorded.
Preliminary plan was approved at the Plan Commission meeting last week also. As part of a public hearing. Preliminary plan, the next item on the agenda was approved to Plan Commission. That's when they recommended to the board at last Wednesday's meeting.
Do you have a discussion by the board?
So question, if we approve this, that means that he will, he can go in there and build them houses and have medium density, high density, et cetera. Is that correct?
So it all you're doing is approving the ability to have those zoning districts within this parcel. The the preliminary plat and eventually the final plat is is how the the subdivision will be built. So it's kind of first we tackle use, then we tackle the.
The low density and the high density, aren't you pretty much saying, yeah, he has the right to go and build these?
Yeah, but you're not talking about number of location of or anything else. It's just.
Yes, the ability to build.
But he has the ability to build.
He can't build anything until.
Right?
So.
I'm sorry, say it again.
He can't do anything until the final plat has been approved, reviewed by us, DOA, DOT and filed with the registered deeds. And we're a long way from there.
Okay. Understand.
Okay. One more time for the board, I hate the session. Take all those in favor.
Hi.
Opposed?
I oppose. Two opposed?
Three.
Three. Shelly two. Okay, thank you. That passes on a four to three.
Item E, discussion standard preliminary plat application for Badger Trails subdivision.
Yeah, so we actually kind of started didlin with talking about it, uh, but this would be the actual layout, size, number of lots, uh, placements. Plan to be dedicated to the village for various uses. Um, so on and so forth. The numbers I read earlier, but the uh, high density lots, those are going to be a little different than what this shows because those were done on my review of the plat before. Um, the additional sixteen or so lots were were taken out. So there are now sixteen more medium density lots. Uh, or sixteen less high density lots and however more uh, medium density lots. I didn't, I didn't count them.
All right, I'll reiterate those numbers, Ian. This is Jeff. Uh, one hundred and thirty-eight high density. Fifty medium density, fifteen low density. Thank you. Some of the, some of the high densities conform to the other classifications, but I didn't bother doing spot zoning. Because as we go through the final plat process, you know, the lot sizes will change based on where we need to put a sewer manhole or what or what have you. So, uh, the preliminary plat really conforms to, um, you know, the zoning map, which is much easier to see uh, with the colors on it. But again, we have the green space buffer. We have the low density lots on the south transitioning to medium density. And then uh, medium density along the east as well, that entire first block. I had some discussions with the Sullivans before and after the meeting and last week, actually, we met with them privately. After the meeting last week, there was some concern or confusion about the actual property line. I sent my survey crew out to mark that. And we, me and my client and I, and and I stand by it, well, we committed to work, you know, have have another dialogue with them, I guess, as we continue the process. Uh, there is a phasing map if Gabe is still holding the boards. Uh, the the far southwest corner of the property is our is our fifth plat, so. Um, it's going to be, you know, several years to get to that point, kind of starting on the north and northeast and working southwest.
Surprise there.
There, here, here, here.
So Ian, can you explain the process? So we're, so if we approve this preliminary plat tonight. For each phase, they will have to come in and do a final plat approval, correct?
Not necessarily. Uh, that's the way that they they said that they're they're willing to do it, but not necessarily. Uh, so statutorily anyway, um, when somebody uh, wants to put in for a plat, uh, the preliminary plat process itself is not required by state statute. It's something that requires a village, like villages and cities can require this. Um, but so long as as the village acts on it uh, and it meets all the the criteria and the ordinance, uh, it moves on to the final plats stage and the final plat stage is more of as built. Um, and so that is the final that gets uh, approved by the governing body and sent to the Department of Administration and Department of Transportation for review and a comment and approval. And the DNR in some stages, but not this one. Once that's sent, it goes to registered deeds and it's recorded and put on GIS and issued tax parcel numbers and all that stuff. Uh, so that's the whole process. They said that they would come back uh, for each phase uh, before they start construction. And that may even be the way we have it in our development agreement. I don't remember.
We have a master development agreement in each phase and it's.
Yeah, so so that's something that's a little bit of an oddity from statute, but.
And if I remember correctly, the motion that was made and passed at the meeting last Wednesday was recommended to the board, but wasn't there some language in there about looking at a uh, access across the Badger Trail, working with DOT to find an access across trail, right?
That is our goal is to work some type of village park.
So there, we might have talked about that. There wasn't specific language in the motion, if I remember, but I'm pulling it up.
And just remind you, based on, it's in my my uh, memo as well, the discussion I had with the the DOT, you forward me to the DNR, the DNR rep said that they would only work with the village on a village sponsored project. Not guaranteeing anything, but work with the village on a village sponsored project for an at grade crossing. Um, they wouldn't work with anyone else. So it would have to be, you know, bridge or tunnel, and that's not happening. Uh, so and again, we don't, the village doesn't own any of the land on the other side of the the Badger Trail either. So it would be part of a larger project that we've not been planning.
So if I understand this correctly. The twenty twenty-five oh four, which we just voted on, there was two hundred and forty-eight houses. Not with.
The original plat that was put in was two hundred and forty-eight.
Yeah.
That was the first Plan Commission meeting. The second one, uh, based on on comments uh, and negotiations was moved down to two hundred and nineteen. Uh, and then during the last Plan Plan Commission meeting last week, it would move down further to two hundred and three.
Hundred and three.
So your last motion you just approved was just the ordinance about the zoning. It had nothing to do with, that's why we're talking about the prelim plat now. So twenty twenty-five dash oh four simply provides guidelines for zoning areas.
And now this preliminary plat application. We're looking at the number of high density houses went from one eighty-four down to one thirty-eight. Am I correct?
Um, Jeff, is that correct?
Well, it started at two forty-eight when we submitted, but now it's one thirty-eight for high density. The preliminary plat is really follows the zoning that was just approved, uh, but it really lays the groundwork for the public improvements. Um, you can see on the drawing and, you know, it's a lot of detail. The engineer, Kevin cares more about it than um, most others, but we will have full public streets, um, thirty feet pavement. Two feet of gutter on each side, so thirty-four feet wide. Uh, Chance last week commented on the the emergency vehicles being able to get through. So there's a, there's going to be at least a twenty foot clear lane, single lane, even if you had parking on both sides. Uh, we have full sidewalks through the development. The the twenty foot buffer lot, we're just, we're just reserving as like a no build zone. So this is not really, not doing anything to touch it. Some people commented last week about, you know, any tree removal, et cetera. We're not, we're not touching any of those trees. It's just, it's just kind of like basically just staying the way it is. And every, everything for our development starts twenty feet inside the property line. Stormwater is handled in two two uh, detention basins, and I'll correct Ian by saying that the Wisconsin DNR will be reviewing and approving our stormwater management report. So that'll be a key key component of the project.
So the one hundred and thirty-eight high density houses will have a lot size of what?
I know there's six thousand.
Six thousand square feet.
You were from six thousand.
Fifty by a hundred and twenty?
Yeah, so they said.
It's sixteen to thirteen. Six thousand to thirteen.
Anywhere between six thousand and thirteen thousand.
Okay.
Right. It's like the majority of them are.
The minimum is six thousand and the majority were the minimum. We're very close there too.
Hey, I'm going to be the one to say it. I would much rather see a lot forty-one through sixty-six. Continue with the medium density rather than high density. Agreed. I think we need to keep the high density a little more centralized.
It's this.
The ones that border the Badger Trail. Greenview Dome. Yeah. On the far left.
Forty-one.
Forty-one is one of the largest lots already. Okay, we'll say forty-two then. Because that's two flights. And that's thirteen thousand feet. So I'd much rather see those, especially since they back up to green space, right? Parks. That's kind of the whole, that's.
I guess what's.
I guess the uh, our, I guess our our take is like we're we're make, you know, we are donating parkland, so if somebody has a small lot, they're right behind the park, so why not?
I get that, but well, crowded, still awful crowded and we're trying to preserve the the Badger Trail itself. And make the neighbors.
I just don't see a difference.
You got three thousand more feet.
If I had one of those backyards, I'd I'd be sitting in my backyard and I get to look.
Watch the Badger Trail.
At a giant, you know, basically the Badger Trail behind me and regardless of, you know, what's on the sides.
Yeah, nobody lives there in person.
That's, that's just it. I mean, I I don't think anybody's really thought about the wildlife factor of this.
The whole thing is going to disrupt that.
Absolutely. And then like Adam said, I mean. He can't go out in his underpants.
That's going to change a whole lot. I mean, it's farm field right now. That's, you know, no trees and it's along that, that uh, the trail is is all the, all the trees, you know, the scrub that's grown up over the years and that's not getting cut down. That's on state land.
I just think there's too much height.
Every year we're on, your jar jar flow of water. I just don't think where everything's going, so it is going to change the ecosystem.
Absolutely, it is.
That's, that's a fact.
I get the need for houses. That I, I'm not denying that one bit. It's the high density. There's a safety factor there as well. Try to turn an ambulance around. Or a fire truck. Or a fire truck.
Yeah, fire EMS and PD, they can speak PD, but they they've all signed up on this. I talked to the DNR about uh, access along the Badger Trail for exigent circumstances. They said that during an emergency, fire EMS PD could absolutely use the Badger Trail. It stopped short of saying that it, and I've stopped waiting for a callback on that, but they said uh, basically it probably wouldn't really use as evacuation route, but we've also talked about making the streets uh, one side parking. So access for for EMS fire and PD is not an issue.
So let me put it this way then, why don't we start listening to the people of the village? Rather than what a developer says or what he wants. I mean, I've heard from just about everybody, they're they're against the high density. It's a concern for everyone. Why? I understand.
The issue is that the residents have issues with traffic.
Yeah.
Okay.
Add more houses. Why can't we take out fifteen more houses?
And it's it's already zoned to our ordinances.
I'm not taking out any identity. I'm not saying we have to change all the identity, even more centralized, but on the outside.
I.
Why can't we listen to what?
But we did.
Our citizens, why?
If we did, we wouldn't be in this situation.
Two Plan Commission meetings ago, there were seventy people.
I was one of those people.
And so the property owner took into account what was said. They went from two hundred and forty-eight high density lots down to two hundred and three, whatever the next number was.
Two hundred and ninety-two, right now, he's down to two.
And then there was more concern raised at the last meeting. And so they adjusted again. I mean, we walk a fine line between the owner of the property and citizen. If they, if there had been no negotiation in this, I'd be voting no. But there was an effort to meet the concerns of everybody that was at that, at the benefits of me. I asked specifically at the last meeting last week if anybody had any major concerns. Nobody said boo. So.
You can also do a consultant bond by two lots.
I am.
So they did, they had a lot on each end of the house.
I might look at other developers or did we just go with this one?
We have no say over that.
They have, they own the land.
Just like anybody else within the village, that's who we work for, the property owners.
But the village has the right to approve the plan.
The village has to follow state statute. And if the preliminary plat or final plat, for that matter, that's submitted to us, checks all the boxes and our our ordinance and meets all the requirements. checks all the boxes in our, our ordinance and meets all the requirements of state statute, I mean, you can be a little nitty-gritty, you can give and take a little bit so people are happier than they might otherwise have been, but that's, that's the process.
You know, I've raised the possibility going forward that ordinance that Ian was talking about should be revised. We really need to take into account situations like this to where, you know, this national stadium has something to say, especially because the next property yet is along the river. You know, that corridor is very important, just like our river.
And that, that changes, discussions have started about that process, so.
I heard that.
But this is, you know, this is already under our existing ordinances, and we have to follow those, those guidelines. So, I mean, it is, it is compliant. So, you know, there's, and, and the planning commission is recommending it.
Well, three, two people versus.
It was a four to one vote. So, I mean, the issue, the real issue is that you as a board have the right, the authority to negotiate amongst yourselves and present your cases for, for, you know, other options. I, I will point out that there were still concerns about the traffic. And I'll mention that in my statement. A little bit here, but there, just because not everybody spoke up, I mean, that weren't ongoing concerns.
I didn't say that nobody had, yeah, the main concerns I had was with the buffer zone, because that was a big issue, your property on the south. They went in and, you know, if they not budge on that at all, I would not have voted for it the other night. But there was, again, this is a give-and-take process here. So, I mean, nobody's going to get exactly what they want on either side. So, you know, we have nothing, we don't have any say about the land being an ex, from Exeter. That's state law. So if, Adam, if you've got issues with that, you need to contact Dan, Jenna Jacobson, and Howard Markline, and tell them to get that changed. We can't, we can't stop that. So, once the petition is made, so.
You know, we're, made every effort to be good neighbors to, you know, the surrounding, you know, Exeter community. Anthony, if you want to make your statement, I told you I'd give you some time, so.
For those of you that weren't on the plan commission and didn't attend the meeting, I know a couple of you, of course, were there, I just wanted to kind of brief you. And I apologize to Mary for sending off statements so late today, but I wanted to kind of tell you a little bit about the meeting that we had with Jeff Petrie, or Jeff Lincoln Hell, and then Bob Petrie. And then, because I'm not sure you didn't have all the details, and then we just have a few statements for the record to make, that we want in, in the record. So last week, Gabe invited us to meet with Josh Petrie and Jeff on June 11th to respond to their most recent subdivision design plat. To our disappointment, they were not receptive to using the conservation-based approach to the design that we and Steve Applebaum, who is a co-founder of the Plaid Ecological Institute, and also the president of the Southern Wisconsin Land Conservancy that we are using as a land trust organization to place the conservation easement on our land, that we all proposed to the village, Hoopa citizens, and the developer after the last plan commission meeting and may. This despite, which would have generated richer public participation, created more green space, and potentially saved the developer money, ironically. But they chose to pursue, pursue a more conventional approach for reasons that aren't entirely clear, except for maybe the timeline. We focused on the latter half of the meeting on what options exist given that decision to stick with this approach, to create an effective plan to prevent issues with regard to potential contamination of our wetlands from the subdivision. The only realistic and potentially adequate solution that we discussed at the meeting lies with the village and its future actions, rather than with the developer. We appreciated the chance to meet, and I'm grateful, in particular to Jeff for his ongoing dialogue. But, and while disappointed with the outcome, we are choosing to believe that the village will follow through with the opportunity for us to give substantially more input into the time, at the time of the design of the section against our land that abuts our property when the time comes. That said, this placement of a stormwater easement, which is what Gabe had said that the village could commit to doing, on two of the four lots that would drain onto our land in the most vulnerable areas may actually not be adequate for protecting our wetlands, we don't know yet. As part of their baseline survey, the Southern Wisconsin Land Conservancy is installing test sites on our land to measure the flow content and temperature of the water from the Petrie land. We will share the findings with the village and the developer. Gabe has assured us that there's ample time for the village to require the developer to implement stormwater easements or other effective measures to prevent issues that would harm our property. So we rely on the science, including thermal monitoring, to ensure that any water management system effectively protects our wetland. I will say first, we do remain concerned that, have concerns that 200 homes are too many still for the Petrie property, and it is heavily reliant on the idea that we would be built across the Badger Trail at some point. And frankly, we're uneasy at relying on the village to mediate between the developer and safeguard our wetlands. But for now, we will trust, we must trust, that the village will uphold its legal duty, follow the science, and protect our land, because faith, vigilance, and the law are all we have. So, thank you for the extra time.
Jeff, did you have any additional comments?
Well, we did follow through on Friday with one of my, or actually Thursday, with one of my commitments to the Sullivans that we would go stake the south property line. I walked that before the last meeting, looking at our survey versus where, you know, where the tree line was, where the property line was. I believe that the bulk of the actual, the property line itself is out into the farm field. That is what my field guy reports. I don't know if the Sullivans have walked it, but, so I, I mean, I, we're not getting into any of the trees. Markedly, plus we gave the extra 20 feet, so there's 20 more feet of, I guess, what would be tilled soil right now that needs to be restored to some, to some condition, either native grasses or, you know, probably something more than, more than just lawn. So I, I guess I'm, I still say we were committed to sitting down and working with them as the process moved forward. And we've got ideas that we can use the, we, we can, yeah, we can, we can like, look at the detention basin and come up with some different outfalls. I talked about a level spreader at the last meeting. So there's things that can be done.
Yeah, I saw the lot line, it looks good, everything is where it's supposed to be, so, yeah.
And we do appreciate that, Jeff, thank you.
Thank you. And then, and DNR will have a ton of say in the, all this stuff. I mean, ask one of our previous developers in town how much he loves the DNR, because they, you know, like, wanted him, still want him to increase his detention pond. So, I mean, they're not going to just willy-nilly let water run off anywhere, that's what we rely. They have all that power in the world, we don't have much to say about that, so.
Yeah, if, if the DNR tells me that my pond's too small and I gotta make it, you know, bigger, then I, he didn't do more lots to do that. But the preliminary plat is basically in conformance with all the village codes for public street installation, water sewer, storm sewer, streets, curb and gutter, sidewalks. And, yeah, I guess we ask for your approval.
And, and that's, that's where, I want, I want to make sure the board understands that we don't have ordinances for low-impact or conservancy development. So we have to vote on this based on our current ordinances and whether or not they are following that. And it is. So, keep that in mind. Any other discussion from the board?
Has there been any discussion about purchasing the Francois property at the end of Vine Street?
Uh, yeah, I had a meeting with Francois, and they were open to it. I haven't discussed it with, like, I don't know if the Petries have discussed it with Francois's, but I have approached the Francois's, they were open to having that conversation for sure. And there might even be room to be able to put it in, I'm not sure, so.
Yeah, because that's another one of my concerns, just because, especially with the position of the depot. Parking is going to be an issue. That's going to be added traffic on Vine Street. I won't, you know, park in front of my own house, it's going to be a swell.
Actually, that's a good thing about this, because you're going to have people living here, but then it's going to be like, two or three blocks to get to, you know, library downtown, all that stuff, so.
Still go parking next.
We are working on the downtown parking.
That's, that's a separate discussion.
I have a question.
Yes, Maxi.
What if we, what if you did away with all high-density houses? How many houses could you build in those lots, Jeff? If you had just regular-sized lots?
Well, what's right there?
They meet ordinance, they're regular.
No.
Lower median.
You're saying lower medium.
Yeah, but most of the houses in Belleville are not 50 by 120. What if you lowered the high-density number of houses to increase it into low-density? What would the lot sizes be, and how many houses could you build?
Well, I will tell you, I will tell you that at the south end, when I did my concession last week, at the south end of those streets, we basically turned three lots into two lots.
Okay, well, that's still doesn't answer my question.
Okay, so.
With, yeah, 10 seconds notice.
Probably, if you give me the square footage, I could.
Yeah, you'd be, you'd be losing another 50 lots, say, I mean, but we could do 10 five-acre lots.
I'm sorry.
So, like, I guess, we're, we're coming in with a proposal that meets the, the village ordinances, and we're asking for your approval. And I feel, I feel like we've, we've made, you know, we've created an adequate buffer to all the neighbors, even that block between Clive and Greenview. We're showing four lots where there's actually five lots behind us.
Right.
Existing. So, yeah. I, I, I mean, I don't know, I, I feel like, you know, we've come to a reasonable compromise that we want to move forward with.
I'll make a motion, just so we can, nothing else happened, one on this, that we refer to the preliminary plat for Badger Trails.
Second. Any other board discussion? Aaron, I'd like to do a voice vote.
Uh, you're a roll call vote?
Yeah, roll call.
Yeah.
Not, not voice, sorry.
No, that's okay, no, you're right, I got you, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, trustee Bannon?
No.
Trustee Bongard?
No.
Trustee Eiko Kraut?
No.
Trustee Kazmar?
Yes.
Trustee Ward?
No.
Trustee Ziegler?
Yes.
Trustee Service?
Yes.
And that's three to four, excuse me.
All right, so if it's not in corridor, it's needed, I guess, how would you change it?
I reduce the number of high-density along that east side, correct? Is that, am I right? Am I looking at the map right?
West side.
West side, sorry. So what you're saying is you want to take it from 203 houses down to a lower number?
Yes.
So what are you saying, from 203 to like, from 75, and so we'll give them 180? I just feel like there needs to be more medium than the high-density, there's not a band. Like, for Adam.
That's the town, I got service.
No, conservative, conservation. I think we should go down to, I think we could remove some of that high-density on the west side.
I guess. We need, we need, any other solutions? Because, you know, this is going to have to, it's probably going to get revisited or, or something else will happen, but, you know, this meeting's going to move on here, so.
You got to get some sort of direction.
Yeah.
We're doing the 180, make it all high, all make it more medium and low. Adam.
Mike.
Now, this needs to be the board conversation.
I was just at that question, so.
Do you think we reduce the number of high-density houses so the whole thing comes down to 180?
Would you make a motion to approve it at 180 if that was what is that? Or you, when it comes down to 180, are you going to have issues with it? Like, if that's, you need to be able to give direction on what you have to want. Like, if you come back and prove the learning flat of 190 homes, you made that motion, then you have to come back with 190. Like, like, what, what would you approve?
Provide direction, say I will move 190.
180 homes with the west side becoming more medium and low density. I'll second that.
Aaron is trying to fix our recording.
We got, the recording is fine, you guys can keep going, we somehow kept out everybody else, though, so I'm trying to figure out what happened.
Jeff, can you hear us?
Yeah, I had to come back in, but.
And I just got kicked again. I'm not doing it.
All right, I'm back again.
I ain't touched anything either.
Wait, I'll, I'll, I will just, I will confer with my client. You, you, people on the board have voiced that they would want the west side lots adjacent to the park or the trail to be medium density. I don't know what the final number is, but we can look into that. I mean, at this point.
I would say 180.
180.
Okay, would, it's 180 or bust with you two ladies, sounds like.
Yes, sir.
Um. What, does this have to go back to plan commission, or does it come directly back to the board, Gabe?
Just to the board.
Okay. I guess the plan commission already.
So.
Speak up on your end, sir.
So how does that not meet the ordinance?
All right, sorry.
Entirely meets the ordinance. If they wanted to file a lawsuit right now, they could.
Because I made a decision, well, then let them file their lawsuit.
That's for you, you made a decision. I'm just saying it's possible. You could not like what I'm saying, you could not like, that's fine. But I'm just saying it's possible, it opens up litigation. That's all I'm saying. You can check with Rick.
But, well, before I get cut off again, I'll just say that, like, you guys have voted. Well, I'll confer with my client, we'll, we'll figure out our next steps.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. So if that sounds like that, we'll have to go back to the board for legal. So, next item, moving on. Item F, Discussing Consider Ordinance 2025-05 Regarding Comprehensive Plan Amendment Application for Bell West Lot 23.
That lot 23 is a corner lot. It was purchased to be turned into a business facility, like, and, and kind of sport facility. It's allowable in the general commercial zoning, which is what you would consider after this. This is to amend the long-range land use map to allow zoning for that lot. So, really, this is the precursor, so we already have the trying to switch gears, may I have a second? We have the long-range land use plan in the comprehensive plan that states this part, business park. All right, so this obviously would not be used to be in the business park, but it is used to be allowable in the commercial district. So just seeing if you guys are amenable to amending the long-range use plan to allow for general commercial. And if you are, then the next, that would be this vote, and the next vote would be to actually zone it as general commercial.
I make a motion to approve ordinance Twenty Twenty Five Zero Five to amend it to where's, what did you say?
Each general commercial.
Second.
Second, Debbie. Any other board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Yeah, followers, yeah, thank you.
I have a question. Where is Lot Twenty Three in Bell West Side?
It's this, uh, this is the UW clinic, and this is the lot right here, just north of it.
That is amazing.
No, this is one of the spot.
Little spot here. Okay.
Uh, Kayla is here, she's the, she can explain it better than I can, but, yeah, something like a, like a smaller, like.
Alright, um, Army G, Discuss Consider Ordinance Twenty Twenty Five Oh Six regarding rezoning application for Bell West Lot Twenty Three to be changed from BP Business Park to BG General Commercial District. So, same, same lot.
It's again, there's a comprehensive plan, and then there's the actual rezone.
Yeah, it's just allowed for this zoning in that area, and so now this is actually just changing the zoning of that lot from BP Business Park to BG General Commercial.
This is the actual zoning change now.
Correct.
That we're allowing to make it because the comprehensive plan has been amended.
Yes.
I'll move we approve.
Second.
Just closer to me.
He doesn't want to sit under the cold air either.
I would love to sit under. Any discussion from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Alright, item H, Discuss Consider Approval of the Carolina Street Park.
Alright, so there's a memo attached to the agenda for your approval for the design of the park with, um, their bidding expectations. Which you will be approving tonight is, um, pretty much the cost of it, you're like, obviously by change, but the contractor to go up to bid and you're agreeing to the timelines, kind of, this is the expectations of it. So Carolina Park is the half-acre park that's going to be our, uh, trailhead for the west-side trail project. Staff is, is looking at, so we're purchasing land from Petrie, so it's two hundred thousand dollars, and then the one hundred thousand dollars will be back to us as his development reimbursements. Um, so, we're looking at grants, we have applied for grants from the state and from the county to help pay for it, all that's laid out. Phase one of the project will pays out a park development fund, which is what this money was designed for, because it's parking pad fees on the west side, and then GeoDeb will pay for phase two. Is in the capital budget for next year. Uh, the park has two shelters, one at the trailhead, and one by the playground. Um, the playground is, um, just kind of a simple playground, but it's pretty nice design. Uh, yeah. Obviously, some of these costs are, um, inflated and projectionary. Um, so hopefully that will go down as time goes off. The, the Parks Committee has, uh, removed um, five thousand dollars of cost by not doing new picnic benches, um, but the rest they wanted to put in to match the new designs.
You're gonna be mad at me now, too?
No.
Yeah, okay.
So, there's gonna be no picnic tables at all?
No, we're gonna use the wood picnic tables that we have for the other parts.
We're not by anyone's.
So I had this conversation earlier with Gabe, but if we, and again, sellers, MSA, everybody we use is conservative and, and bids on the higher, puts prices in on the the high side, but if we pay fourteen thousand dollars for a water fountain, we should all be removed. So I'll just say that. I went out on the line and look, the exact same one that we have in either park is about a fifteen hundred dollar item, so I'll just take that now. So what is it, so if these get approved and I, are they going to bid right away or what?
Yeah, they're gonna go to bed, um, and get all that, those documents ready for you guys' final approval. And then that's also the time to say, yeah, we need to cut, or once we know what the actual park, projects is gonna cost.
It's like connecting that water fountain, there's a line item in here of fifteen hundred dollars, connected existing water main, so.
Yeah, so, even, that's a problem, drinking fountain and the water main, we should be well under fourteen thousand dollars, so.
Fifteen hundred dollar number is probably pretty accurate for putting a saddle on a lateral.
Yeah, but, yeah, and like I said, I realize that everybody that we use for consultants is conservative and bids high, so that, yeah, but, uh, these are also public backing, and so we get, if we get three bids and they all come in at fourteen thousand dollars for a, for a drinking fountain, we'll buy our own drinking fountain and install the damn thing, so.
Is, is this locking us into, for example, two shelters, or can we?
You can change that. This is the cost of it. Once you go up to bid and say, yeah, the project is done, you have the contract, it's worth X amount of dollars, and yeah, you're there, but if now you go, well, let's go and see if the bids come back, and so, hi, we're gonna cut out a shelter, you can do that, that.
Is this the little park? Is this the big park?
A little park?
Okay.
I was gonna ask, what age playground equipment are you putting in here? What ages?
All ages.
All ages?
All ages.
Oh, that's not what you guys said before. It's gonna be for little kids, and then doing the one, okay.
No, parks are gonna be.
Okay.
We can get accessible?
Uh, the one on the James Street, they both are handicapped, except for.
Okay, alright.
Alright, I'm making motion to approve the Carolina Street Park. Motion by myself, second by Maxine. All those in favor? Opposed?
James Street project is actually cheaper. Um, we are, it's really just a playground, shelter, um, and two shelters with swings, there's gonna be four sets of swings, and I think I'm in, and then just an empty field.
Are there restrooms anywhere, or, you know, porta potties or anything? Nothing?
We could probably add that eventually later, um, but. Depends, the cheapest option, the one that we used in my hometown, is actually just a concrete slab. You put a porta potty in, and then you put a wooden fence around it, and then you clean it. So, that's how I, that's how I grew up. Uh, so if it always, there's a need, or we're hearing a lot about that, we can always add that later. And that'd just be part of our porta potty contract. Um, but actually to put shelter in and put an actual physical, that's something that's expensive, and then it's a, it's a cleaning. You gotta maintain it, all that kind of stuff, open it, close it, winterize it. A porta potty that you could just take out at the end. Solution.
So, essentially the same discussion we just had, I'm over, no fourteen thousand dollar drinking fountains.
I'm only heard the James Street part.
I'll second it.
Motion by Gary, seconded by Maxine.
It's an only here, you seconded first.
I mean, it's actually Mike's discretion, he is the president, but.
I hired Tony.
Tony did second it.
Alright, if you heard Tony, then that's fine.
Okay, Gary wasn't totally done giving the motion yet, so like, that's just like, simmer, man.
So that's, that's the same quoting process, um, as, as the.
All of, so Carolina Park, the infrastructure, utilities, is gonna be put in this fall of this year, that's all hope, that's the design plan. Uh, because we have the money in that park development, we're gonna use most of it out of that, because that's what it's designed for. James Street Park, we do not have the money in that fund, so you're gonna use capital debt next year if you move with the project.
We answered that thing. If we end up not getting the grants, we don't have enough money to do Carolina with Long James. So that, that's, that's the quiet part out loud.
You do if you were to know. So.
Why I did second that way?
You don't have to, the, out of the park development fund, but you're gonna have two hundred thousand dollars back from one hundred thousand dollars back from the purchase of it, and will go into the general fund, you can always send that back to purchasing land. We're also only doing phase one of this year, so. Put by bid time, what that was. Right timeline?
No.
So, we can also number by final bid time.
So, it was in August, September, when I was doing it.
So, in one of the memos, we talked about, so we're not gonna apply for any grant money or anything for the other part?
I think we only did it for Carolina because of the trailhead access, it matched more what they were.
Okay, alright.
Yes, that's right. Do we require them not to exceed in any of these motions?
If you wanted to put them in, Gabe did give you motion language, but um, that's at your discretion.
I mean, until we get the bids back, it doesn't make any sense, we can settle what we want to do.
We'd have to, we'd have to honor the bid, or vote on the, the bid anyway.
Yeah, so.
And that's the time we can take.
Any other discussion? Hearing all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I guess just to have a um, Wisconsin Development Corporation has grants municipality thing, like downtown park that they were giving out, one, he got one, and the fourth he got two. You do two?
Yep, we got a fifty thousand dollar grant. Downstreet.
Okay.
Alright, where are we now? Jay. On the agenda. Discuss Consider Resolution Twenty Twenty Five Dash Thirteen, we need a special assessments for the sidewalk improvement program. Resolution.
Yes, this is, uh, back to our sidewalk plan, our Twenty Twenty Five, Twenty Twenty Five rebuild, uh, the bit which we approved at the last village board meeting. This is your preliminary resolution declaring your intent to exercise special assessment powers under state statute and our ordinances. Um, that'd be special assessments with the the assessment to the abutting property owners, that we see fifty percent of the cost of, of construction. Also, of course, requires that we have a public hearing, and ten days before that public hearing, send notices to the affected property owners with the amounts of money that they would essentially be subject to under the assessment.
As a village board public hearing, or a pub, public, or public works committee, public here?
Aaron, you have any insight into that?
I don't, but, um. But where, where does the public hearing have to sit? It has, I'm pretty sure it's village board.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
Me either way, but I would.
Right, right, right.
Where are we improving sidewalks?
There's a whole list. A whole list all over the village.
And, uh, the rest before I start.
When did we put out that list? It was in the last month.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I saw that list in the last month or two, it was.
I need it, Doris. I have a comment. The thirty-one thousand dollar sidewalk you're putting into library. All I think about that, we lose our authenticity of that park because it looks like an add-on. It isn't that park has trees and green grass, and nobody's gonna walk around from the transmitter that's there all the way down and around on Vine Street, which is angle parking to the main street. Everybody goes diagonally. And takes that thirty-one thousand and do some, put on a pickleball court that the taxpayers are asking for.
We're trying to keep up that ghetto vibe.
Yeah.
Really, that is ghetto vibe.
That's just, so that's my thought.
Hey, so. Resolution regarding the sidewalk improvement program.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Because I was out in the as my sidewalk on that list, I have no clue.
Yeah.
It was in the preliminary.
If you give me the address, I can tell you.
Twenty-four East Church.
Twenty-four East Church.
Yeah, that's true. And all I need is a
It did not make the final.
Okay.
Not make.
Alright.
So I'll move that we approve Resolution Twenty Twenty Five Dash Thirteen.
Second.
Motion, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Need them.
Alright. Okay, Discuss Consider the Resolution Twenty Twenty Five Dash Twelve, approving the Twenty Twenty Four Compliance Maintenance Annual Report.
This is maybe that is collected from the wastewater replant post force of the last year. You need to, through this submission. If you've gone through in credit, you see that all the data actually looks pretty good. In the C Mar, there really isn't anything nice to be concerned about. But you do have to, a few bits of scale, it's minutes.
I make a motion? Oh, sorry, Gary.
Go ahead, make the motion, I'll ask my question.
To approve the Twenty Twenty Four Compliance Maintenance Annual Report.
I second it.
That is why moving meetings library could be a good thing.
We in discussion?
Yep, we're in discussion.
So, I just wanna talk about the conversation that I had with Gabe today, or with Drew today. In the past, when we've got these, there are some blanks in here that aren't filled in, each section has a, a grade, and then on the last page, there's a gives you your GPA, I feel like you're in back in college or high school again here, but in all the previous ones that we've seen of these, those numbers have been, or those letter grades have been filled in. So I called Drew on it, Drew, apparently, we've been getting it, it's not being, having been done right or whatever, so. So, the way I understand our conversation, Andrew, is once this gets, this resolution gets, uh, approved, you'll let say all that, and then we'll get something back that has the X of grades in there, is that right?
It has the grades, that's my understanding, and I will admit, completely, this being my first time going through this, and to some extent, I need to oh, what's the term? Accept the explanation of an expert. Um, and, and, and for us, that, you know, that's, that's date with MSA, and that is how he tells me it is supposed to be done, we submit this first, and if you look at the resolution, all it really says is that we reviewed it.
Right, yeah, because if we, if your grades are below a certain point, or your GPAs, for lack of a better term, it's below a certain point, and that's when you and I and everybody starts getting asked, and tell you, you gotta start doing things. Again, we've been an A probably ninety-five percent of the time on this report, from what I can remember, I said. I thought, yeah, I, when we get the final load of the grades, that's a copy that, at least, we should get a So, yeah, I, when we get the final note of the grades, that's a copy that at least we should get a. A electronic copy of, so.
Oh, yeah.
For public work committee. So if there are any issues that we need to deal with, we can do that, so.
Your memo has 2023.
The resolution or the. The actual. I can tell you where that resolution came. Where did I miss it? Or is it on the actual C Mar?
No, it's on the.
No, it's on the middle. Approving in 2023 compliance.
Oh, I missed it as a title.
I said it would be resolved. It's that twenty-four.
Yeah, it'll take twenty-four once we decide it, um.
It's a repeating resolution, so I bet you can guess where it came from.
Exactly. Alright, I got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, rose course from boards, commissions and committees. That parks, wrecking four streets.
We've pretty much covered. We took a look at playground equipment for Carolina and James and. It felt some really. Neat stuff.
We picked on a zip line.
It'll be happy. Other than that, just moving forward.
So July 2nd would be the night that the. The master plans for Sugar River and Community Park get reviewed, right?
I believe so, yeah.
Yes. And said, and have committee during July what?
Seven.
Every board?
Nothing.
Economic Development and Tourism.
We're looking at banners for main, main street and the parks.
Arts and Culture.
So arts and culture, what did we talk?
The the murals on a pause and um. Also, we are trying to invite the public to our next art and culture meeting, which is July the third. To get input about what they'd like, what they like, what they don't like on UFO days and ways we can improve. So tell your friends, come if you want. We'd love to have a great discussion of arts and cultures.
Oh. Talking back to Parks and Rec, Gabe had sent out a survey on what to name the parks. I guess you have Facebook, somebody did say Parky.
Yes.
Parky McPerk face and I was kind of a zone because that's somebody.
Can we go back there and some go together? So, um, the community club has uh. Designated some money for new Christmas decorations.
Oh.
Well, so just hang on before everybody starts getting all happy about that. So. We should probably work together with the Arts and Culture Committee because. The the decorations we were looking at were more for. The light poles, but seeing as nobody's putting in above ground light poles anymore. So if we wanted to look at redoing something on Main Street. We should have that conversation. So at some point when that gets on the, if you want to put that on the agenda, I'd be more than happy to come and. On the community club side and we can talk about that, so.
Oh, yeah.
I remember the days when they used to string from building to building top and that kind of stuff and, you know, those are the things we talked about. So we're going to try to. Upgrade what we do. We're going to work with the go on as it's here. In Library Park and maybe try to do the water fountain and a little more in the gazebo and the building. So kind of where we're looking at, so.
We're moving on to Christmas in August.
Well.
And so that would be a good time to like, not saying, yeah, just cause.
Licensed advisory, we approved everything tonight.
Yeah, we did. Thanks, guys.
Finance and governance.
Um, spent a good hunk of the meeting on the capital improvement plan. That's was that committee's homework for the next meeting to. But through it and we will then make a recommendation to the board on that. Um. I don't know what else to be discussed. I think that was the main part of the meeting, that's the budget, so the capital. Um, and then there'll be a little law while staff get their budgets to gave and then. We will have our first, at the next meeting, we'll have our first financial management clan from uh. Uh, elders too. So if you want to learn more about capital plan, that would be a good meeting to come to, so.
And now, Ian had sent out that email about uh, the basics of budgeting.
Yep.
Suggest if you have time to sign up for that and and take it if. I did that last year and it was pretty helpful.
Yep.
Aaron EMS district board.
He had previous meeting.
I think we should leave that especially our close session.
Standing commission, myself, we basically covered all the items of in today's meeting. That we discussed, you know, worked a lot with uh, tree and adjusting the developments. I guess we're dealing with that yet. Police committee.
Will be dealing with everything in closed session.
And Lake Bellville, River Ad hoc committee.
We met tonight again, uh, July eight. From five thirty to eight thirty contingent upon the library being available, we're going to have a. Public hearing or a public meeting to get input on the uh, on the twelve items that this previous board came up with. Um, so that we can start, so we can get the public input and then. We as a committee can make our recommendations to the board uh, by the September of board meeting, so. Um, so again, September, July eight, five thirty to eight thirty, so that'll coincide with. Farmers market, the, the music in the park, all that kind of stuff, so.
Alright, I've got communications miscellaneous business. Any other news or announcements? Upcoming community events.
Farmers market starts tomorrow. I'm not sure any super excited about it. Uh, using in the park. And.
Very queen, very queen calling tomorrow night too?
I think that's what I read, yes.
Yes, it is. Um, a little concerned about the weather though.
Yeah.
Let's knock it off.
Alright, and future agenda items, we're probably gonna have, but uh, those are bigger trails. Alright, moving on, in closed session, the village Belleville Village Board will enter in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen dot eight five. Subsection one subsection C for the purpose of deliberating, negotiating the purchasing of public property. Basically investing the public funds or conducting other specified business whenever competitive bargaining reasons require a closed session, the village board. May reconvene into open session and take action on the subject matter discussed in closed session. We have. Uh, one rating of this, we have three items that will be discussed. Discuss and consider Steven. I say that right?
Right.
Youth apprentice compensation, discuss and consider the appointment of Parker Frederickson as patrol officer. Discuss and consider the appointment of Paige Myers as part-time patrol officer. Uh, have to read this again.
Me too.
Okay, sorry.
And the village Belleville Village Board will enter in a closed session. Statute statute eighteen dot eight five subsection one subsection E for the purpose of deliberate. Liberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties. Funds or conducting other specified business whenever competitive bargaining reasons require a closed session. The village board may reconvene into open session and take action on the subject matter discussed in closed session. And this item is established in the. Position regarding the. Belleville firing EMS just contract. Alright, motion by Tony, cause I heard you this time. Seconded by Debbie.
We're calling this. Yes, we are. Trustee Bain and.
Yes.
Long guard.
Yes.
I've proud.
Yes.
Asma.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Deekler.
Yes.
Service.
Yes.
And we're in closed session at seven forty.
So. We got it. Please. Yeah, we got one motion, right?
Yep.
Yep, and I'll make the motion to oh.
You're ready.
I'm ready.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve uh contingent offer of intent to Parker Fredrickson and Gage Myers.
Second.
For the Belleville Police Department.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Fosed. And then and we did the other motion, closed session there. In motion.
I make emotion to adjourn.
Second man.
Yeah, we got it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Fosed. It passes.
Not two.